Being of the Board of Executive Committee to Order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Some viewers may watch live Board Committee meetings online at TCaps.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Looking for public comment, there is no one here, so we will pass public comment. Procedural items, Dr. Van Wijnauw is joining us virtually, but we, so I will cover the first procedural item, which is the draft committee meeting minutes. So give me a second, sorry, this is not usually my area.
You just said that if hearing no changes, remains with changes.
Changes. Oh, sorry, the minutes, yeah, I was thinking the actual words there, sorry, thank you.
Yes. Yep.
Hearing no changes, this is my part, so.
You got this, Scott.
Minutes will remain as posted. Board policy, DeFonte Connie Taylor.
Alright, so we have for this party, a few updates. We've been going through the process of doing the administrative guidelines, which is like kind of the second step. And in doing so, we've been comparing our policies to the administrative guidelines. And so in doing so, Katie Cubish, we asked her to take a look at the administrative guideline and the the board policy. We asked our nurses to take a look at the administrative guidelines and the medical ones. And in addition to making some suggestions on administrative guidelines, they've also made some suggestions on some tweaks to the board policy. But I'll start at the top here, we have the social media, it says new, it's not new to our board. This was actually a policy we had under Neola. And it really talks about limitations on, you know, when we can remove public posts, those sorts of things. Our expectations on what people can and cannot do on social media and what we are able to do in response. And we did not have something similar in Trune. So it was a suggestion and recommendation of our Communications Department that we adopt that. So the social media policy right now in Trune is forty-two seventeen. And we are recommending that we just adopt the Neola one as the forty-two seventeen B for social media. Again, a policy that we've had for years, just transferring it over. The second one, as I indicated, Katie Cubish looked at our homeless student, made just a few minor tweaks, referencing the McKinney-Vento Act. Acting, clarifying her title as the homeless liaison. And basically talking about community meal sites on the second page, but very, very small changes. Again, just to reflect TCAPS and make them more specific. One of our board members had pointed out too, under the commencement, is that we, under Neola, had somehow got missed in terms of the transition over. Under the commencement, where we talked about students being able to wear, in addition to the prescribed cap and gown, some additional items. We had in our policies, items of religious and cultural significance. And previously, we'd also included the word personal. So we're just adding that, so it mirrors what we had under Neola. And the board had done a lot of work on that policy previously, so we just wanted to make sure that it was consistent. And then the last three, fifty-seven oh three, fifty-seven oh five, and fifty-seven thirteen, were ones which our nurses reviewed for us. Just to make sure that they, we are again lining with our current practices. You'll note on your copies that they're recommended changes in red. Again, not feeling like it really changes the substance of the policy, just adds some additional clarification and reflects our current practices.
Alright, and I think, you have a question?
I have some questions.
Oh, wait, if they're on the medication ones, I might have to take note and get back to you.
Oh. Well, actually, the first one was on forty-two seventeen B, the social media.
Yes.
Hate speech, do we have a definition for that? Because actually, Facebook got in trouble for that one.
Right. No, there's court cases that have interpreted hate speech. And it typically tends to be things related to racial comments, negative racial comments against one another or religious. So lots of times they're around, again, race, or a lot of it might be, like for example, some of the court cases have talked about comments on antisemitism. Those, those sorts of pieces. So we use court definition. Again, it's very similar to when the Supreme Court talks about obscenity. They don't want to define it, but they say we know it when we see it.
What I was wondering is, could we kind of flip it a little bit? And say, public comment should be civil and respectful in language and expression.
The only reason hate speech is included in there is that under the First Amendment, hate speech is specifically excluded. And that's the terminology that they use as hate speech, is not protected speech. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, I think that they wrote it to align with the exclusions from the First Amendment is defined by the courts.
Because I think it gets to be such a fine line, and it can be such an interpretable thing. So yeah, I understand what you say on the antisemitism. And I totally agree, getting a political or a racial war online is horrible, absolutely horrible. But you know, to emphasize that, you know, what you want to read and hear is something you'd be willing directed in your direction. Which is that whole, I think a lot of times we forget the importance of civil discourse. It's okay to be in disagreement, but it is absolutely not okay to be insulting about it, mean about it.
And I agree, unfortunately, so much of it is subject to interpretation. Like even when we talk about defamatory comments, is that somebody's opinion or is that true defamation, you know, libel or slander? But they say defamation, defamatory comments are not protected under the First Amendment. Hate speech is not protected under the First Amendment. You know, things that cause words like yelling fire in a crowded theater, not protected by the First Amendment. So a lot of it is subject to interpretation. I think it could be appropriate to put like in parentheses behind hate speech, the, the language that you suggested, just to kind of give additional clarity. But I, I, I do think it's important to make sure that the policy aligns with what the courts have said are not protected levels of speech.
Okay, I just think that so often, we've gotten away from the civil discourse. And so you get people that just plain shut up, they go quiet. And I, I just, you know what I'm trying to say?
I like your enthusiasm of change.
Okay.
But again, even, even using the terminology that you had suggested, I think that people would also say that's subject to interpretation.
That's, that's that.
Yeah, mean, right, mean.
Like what means mean, what means unethical, what's insulting, you know, what's insulting?
And insulting, mhm. Right.
Well, yeah, but then that's why I'm thinking, you know, civil.
And you're like, insulting.
Would you, how would you feel if that were directed at you? You know, would your blood pressure go up two or three or five points?
But again, yes, some people have thick skin, you know?
But some people won't be affected. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, is I, I kind of don't like the whole idea of censorship. But I do think to just run it through, is this the best way I can say it? So people don't react to how I say it, but they react to hearing what I say.
I think you'll be better off putting focus in the next sentence, which I also think we need to look at quickly. Which is TCAPS will attempt to respond to public comments that are factually incorrect with correct data or evidence. So your comment may be better entwined, maybe in adding to that. And we also, my only comment was, up until last year, we didn't comment at all.
Correct.
And then we did say that we would, we had kind of a generic, where it's like, please reach out to thing. But this goes even further than that, so this isn't current practice.
Well, I think this was our policy previously, that they had the ability to remove comments that may have fallen under one of these. So I think that TCAPS will remove or not post public comments, which, you know, because these are not protected.
Right. And this one's a wall, which we weren't doing.
Correct, well, they, we will attempt to respond.
Attempt, yeah, I guess, attempt, sorry.
Yes.
So, yeah, I, I, that's, I just want to make sure that lines up with currently what we are doing and what we're gonna do. That was my only question.
Yes.
And I do think that maybe this one, I've got, there's been a couple other questions from board members, none of them are controversial. I think we should put it as a discussion item.
Sure.
And ask members to reach out to you with any questions, so you can be prepared, because they're not very complicated questions.
No, sounds good, I'm happy to do so.
And then I have two more questions.
Alright.
Technicality.
Okay.
Do we have a similar policy for Narcan that we have for the EpiPen? And the reason that I ask is because we make a point of saying that we, we watch the date and we always have some here.
Yes.
And so I was wondering if we had a mirror policy for Narcan.
Yeah, I don't believe that we do.
Yeah, I don't remember Narcan.
I don't, they haven't gone through the process, I don't believe that we do.
Okay, because I was wondering, you know, just if that was something to consider.
We, we can look into that and see if we do, for sure.
Because it's another date, drug that you would have on hand. And then my last, I think my last question is, oh, no, sorry. Second to the last one, in the homeless area, there is an F. We say immediate enrollment regardless of immunization records. And it doesn't totally line up with our concept about when you enroll a kid, you have to have some record or something that indicates where they are in the process of being immunized, or, or how they're going to not do it. And I'm wondering again, if we need to mesh those.
So actually, we, in terms of immunizations, that, the lack of immunization records cannot be the basis for denying enrollment. We can give them a period of time after they have enrolled to provide those records. They have an ability to, you know, or they can, you know, seek a medical exemption, a religious exemption. Or they can choose to remain unimmunized, but if there's an outbreak, they're notified that they have to stay out of school for a certain period of time. So it cannot be a basis for not enrolling a student.
So I, I guess I didn't read it quite that. I thought it was a little bit more lenient towards the homeless student enrolling than it was to all the other kids regardless of donor services.
It's, it's any, any student.
Okay, and I have a question on J, dispute res- dispute resolution.
Under which of the, I'm sorry, Beth, which?
Same one, fifty-three oh seven, homeless J.
Okay.
And where we say, you know, that a homeless child must be immediately enrolled and served in the school for which enrollment is sought pending final resolution. Is that true even though that school may no longer be taking students of choice?
That is correct.
So you can have a student enrolled and their sibling may not be able to be enrolled, but you, will that present a problem?
So McKinney-Vento is pretty clear as it relates to enrollment of homeless students. So if the parents are alleging that this is, this was our district or we have entitlement, if they fall under the definition of homeless under McKinney-Vento, you are required to enroll them, but then you can then look and potentially dispute the, the the claim that that, that they're entitled to go to that district. But again, it's not a basis for denial, so if, so a lot of what we find McKinney-Vento is very prescribed, you can have a student, if they're homeless, be able to continue to attend TCAPS even if they're now residing in Cadillac, for example, and the district has to provide that transportation. And if the district is saying, we haven't, no, we weren't their home district, but they had been here, or so there's some sort of a dispute, we have to allow that and provide those services until we go through the dispute resolution process and a determination is made otherwise.
Okay, I thought it was from the county line, but we made that.
Regardless of whether. No, no, there's, it is pretty substantial.
They were driving to Cadillac to do it.
It is substantial, or provide, you know, the resources for them to get their own transportation, gas cards, those sorts of things. But yeah, we, we're required to do that.
Okay, and then to the commencement, fifty-four ten.
Mm-hmm.
Cultural, so that would cover the Eagle Scout regalia.
Or the personal, mhm.
Okay.
Yeah, essentially what we, we come down to with all of it is, and I think the last few years, when you first do it, it becomes a little scary, like, oh gosh, how are kids gonna show up at graduation? And what we have found is that kids have been pretty respectful. And we just put it all under the umbrella, is so long as it's not, you know, offensive to other people. Then if it's of personal, religious, or cultural, we don't get into defining those, you know, how personal is it really to you? You know, kind of, we don't go there, if it's not offensive, just like other dress codes, kids are allowed to do it. And I think that they've done a really great job adhering to that and being respectful.
Oh, actually, I think it adds color to the ceremony.
Yeah, I know, there's always that fear when you move from, this is what you're gonna do, don't like opening it up, because you don't know with teenagers, but I think they've done a great job doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Just, okay, those are my questions.
So one other on commencement, while we're on that one, was after personal, shouldn't there be?
A comma.
A comma?
A comma, yeah.
And I did agree, I think there was a few, maybe comments to you, at least I received. It probably would be, I don't think it matters either way, but religious, comma, cultural, or personal.
We can.
If we can reverse the order.
Yeah, we can tweak it, for sure.
Um, seems to flow a little bit.
We'll get that fixed for the board.
Okay. Do you think that covers any other, hopefully will save us some time on the main meeting as well.
Hope it wasn't too much in the weeds, I tried to just be restful.
No, I thought, I thought all your questions, I'd like, oh no, that's gonna be there, medication questions, I'm not asking the nurse. Yeah, only the one, and we'll find out for you. The, the EpiPen, to be honest with you, that language comes right from statute, you know, in terms of what we're supposed to do. I don't think there's a lot around Narcan yet, you know, in terms of being prescribed, but we'll look into it.
Look at that one. And the thing is, is, you know, in the Epi one, they talked about, these are the signs of anaphylaxis. Are they gonna talk about the signs of when you would, here's the Epi.
Yeah.
And so that it was.
It's such a new thing, Beth, to be honest.
Interesting.
It's, it's very, very new, and honestly, I mean, obviously, it's a sm- of knock on wood, a secondary situation. And lots of times it's kept on site for parents or visitors, and not necessarily just our students.
Yeah, well, you just never know.
Yeah.
And you cannot predict what.
Yes.
Absolutely, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Um.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So a few changes that will be reflected in the packets, everything else can remain on consent. Again, we moved the one that we'll go through right now. So without any other questions on board policy, we can actually cover the agenda. And again, I'll cover, since John is not in the room, it may be a little bit easier. But July fourteenth meeting, called Order, Pledge of Allegiance, review approval portion of the agenda. The first public comment, Superintendent's Report. Update, and is the only additional item within that report stated. Report outs from the various committees and office hours, and then consent. The only change that I did make to the consent agenda is removing that board policy piece, the social media piece, which was B one, I moved that to a discussion in a minute. Everything else is relatively standard in there, I don't think there's anything else to highlight. Public hearing, we have a sex education, feels like it was just yesterday, we had one, but there's another one coming this meeting. And then on to discussion, central high reservations, renovations. The multi-purpose fieldhouse, which is, is in the packet, obviously covered somewhat. School safety update, including a safe route to schools update. And then board policy, we have two, one that was already on the agenda, board member reimbursement and travel expenses. That's on the agenda from a couple of different angles, so there will be some discussion on that one to potentially change. There's, there's two different things, there's some alignment in that that we need to figure out as a board.
Yeah, and like, I'll mention, when we get back to my report, I should have mentioned it in the policy discussions, so I don't worry.
We can go right now if you want, it's.
Okay, so I, one of our board members had approached about the potential of looking at the reimbursement rate for meals for board members and whether or not that that should be increased. And so I, we'd indicated that would be a board decision to make. The question had arisen about in terms of staff, right now the board, the, the policy itself doesn't indicate a rate for staff members, but we have administrative guidelines, and then every year annually, we send out our conference training travel guidelines to staff members. And the amount for staff members, if they're traveling within state per day, is thirty-nine dollars per day. If they're traveling to some of the more expensive states, places like California, New York, Illinois, you know, Chicago, Florida, then that amount goes to seventy-eight dollars per day, so.
It's broken down by cities mostly as well, right?
Um, no, it's, it's actually in our thing, it's in the admin guideline now, and in the thing, it's state. So I mean, you know, technically, it's probably more expensive in Chicago than it is Peoria, but it's too, too difficult to kind of break it down by city, so.
And I think the state guidelines that we used to use did have breakdowns by certain cities, like high, you know, like typically tourist cities as well that were particularly high.
Yeah, right now, we only do it by state per staff, that's as detailed as we get. So, you know, Dr. Van Wijnauw had wanted me to just share that, that, that's where we are with staff and the ninety dollars, and then.
And generally, when we go on a state, you know, it's one of the big things. You know, so, but there's only, you know, we didn't make any differentiation, you know, we generally don't have an issue. Really, the only one that I've seen is back in our island in Michigan, that is super expensive. We really don't see any conferences there, other than what board or, or administration might have for a, a state conference. Very, I, I haven't seen one with, with our, our teaching staff and support staff yet, there.
And I'm, I believe the state does have a guidance document.
They do, the state each year actually publishes a travel guideline with, with food, and they list in-state cities and list the other state cities that are at a higher rate.
So just, I don't even know what it says, I don't know what my argument is for, against, but I feel like that. I remember at MEDC too, there was a very, a nice little document that was summarized that may help us, so.
Is that for state employees?
I think it was for state employees, but it was.
It is state employees and state appointed individuals for reimbursement.
It may just be given by the law.
It's a state department event, it's that, and I did actually, a couple weeks ago, look up the, what the state does update that each year for their employees.
We can, we can pull that information.
Just because I, I, we talk about this every couple of years, and it'd be nice, but in a system that we don't have to talk about every couple of years, that it just is self-updating.
I do wonder if it might be easier that way, if our administrative guideline and policy just said, based on state guidelines, we would, it would take the work off of us. It would be boom, right directly down by the state, as a possibility, as an idea, if that's what you think.
Yeah, and I can have that available for the board at the board meeting, you know, if that's the direction we want. We can, we'll be bringing some additional revisions to board policies, the Trune quarterly update just came out, so we'll be bringing those next month. So we'll have other revisions to policies that we can do as well.
Yeah, it'd be good just to have all the info, we can see where it goes, so. So that was the two-three oh five, and then the second item is the, which we moved, was the social media piece. Again, there was just multiple comments and tweaks that may, may be made, but maybe not. Moving on to the second public comment, or present closing remarks, and then the German.
Scott, can I just say one thing really quick too? It was determined at Board Finance this morning that the consent item under capital services, the SABEN renovations,
Yep.
that's gonna get moved from consent to discussion.
Okay.
And we'll just put that as item A, and then all those other letters will shift.
Okay.
So that will be A, central will be B.
That's fine, yep. So the policy that I just mentioned will be E two rather than D two.
Well, so I have a question, and this is for John. Are you gonna do a report out on a sustainability internal committee at all?
No, that was done, that, that committee, how we both decided, so that was done today at Finance.
I know.
That was, but it's not gonna be at the general board meeting?
That's correct. That's what the board decided, is that it's not a board committee, the, the district committees would be done at our committee meeting, but not at the board.
I didn't realize that's what we all had decided, but it's good to have that clarified.
I, I was not here, but I believe that was probably the main meeting.
Yeah, I don't remember that. Because I, I was thinking that might be a bit of the general public information as well, they might be interested.
John can certainly include any, well, I remember it will be in the finance committee reporter. So there will be some, it's not like it's not gonna get mentioned. Again, I wasn't here, but that's what I do remember as well, the board statement.
Then they'd had the option then too, to watch the finance committee, and it's, that'll be posted online.
Whichever, I mean, again, if you really wanna say, like, watch the committee meetings, that is where the lot of detail is added. And so, um.
Right.
Information, is there any other question, is there any questions on the agenda? Okay, so then we'll move on to informational items on HR, DeFonte Connie Taylor.
Yeah, very short and sweet, we are in a very good place from a staffing level, completely staffed at the elementary level. We are still looking for, for our specials program, an elementary PE teacher, that's a one point O. So looking for candidates for that position. We also are looking for science at the middle school level. But otherwise, we are staffed at all of our other vacancies that resulted from our multiple retirements and some unperceived resignations over the summer. Again, we continue to watch numbers and things we know can happen on a daily basis. So we do have a standing pool of some applicants at the elementary level that we have interviewed, that we could still call upon, assuming those folks aren't getting other jobs in other districts, but feeling like we're in a really good spot. Continue to, and as always, we say this, really do need bus drivers. So if anyone is interested, we have, as we've said, we provide training, sign-on bonuses, as well as part-time flexible schedules, AM, PM, full-time, the benefit package. So if there are anyone out there interested, we, we would love to see some more candidates for our bus driver positions. But otherwise, from all of our other groups, feeling really good about where we are at this juncture of, of the summer. We are in the process, as you know, West Senior High Principal, Joe Esper, has announced his retirement mid-year. So we have been, today actually conducted what would be our first round of in-person interviews. We have a process through HR that we started a few years ago, it's called Spark Hire. So we send out screener interviews, which are video interviews, which we can review in advance, and then determine who to bring forward for in-person interviews. So technically, for some of these folks, their second interview, but first, and we had a number of, I believe, twelve West Senior High and/or central office staff members who sat through that process, and we'll be bringing forth recommendations on candidates to bring forward as we move through the process. Also, at West Middle School, one of our principals, Colleen Schwartz, has elected to go back into the classroom. She's a fantastic special educator, so that opened up a position. And Jeremy Howell, who is one of our APs at East Middle School, lives on that side of town, is, is moving over to that. So our vacancy ended up being at East Middle School, and we have interviews scheduled next week for that position. And had a pretty significantly large pool of applicants for that position. So we'll continue to work through filling those, hopefully we can get them done as we go into the August month and have people in place and ready to go to start the school year. So that's where we stand, and that's my staffing update.
I have a question, this is just clarification. You had two areas where teachers were being moved up for possible tenure, for probable tenure. And one were teachers that were in a group with one year of experience and had done well. Another was a group that teachers had had four years and done well, and how come there's a one year and a four year?
So under the statute, actually, it's three and four. So you have for folks.
Hard to solve.
Yeah, under, it used to be that if you are, when we had the four rating categories, there was ineffective, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective. If you had a staff member who had attained highly effective, three consecutive highly effective ratings, they could be eligible for tenure after that third year. But it had to be three consecutive, so you might have someone who started out as highly effective, and then one year had effective, and then were highly effective, highly effective, because it's not three consecutive, they have to serve the full four-year probationary period.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? In fact, if not, we're. In fact, if not, we'll move to any other items. No, alright, then with no other questions, our next board executive committee meeting is Thursday, July twenty-seventh at four P M. And with that, we are adjourned, thanks.
Thank you.